Happy birthday.
Well, thank you. Help yourself. Help yourself. Treats, I thought. My birthday landed right on a meeting day, so I thought I would bring some treats. So enjoy.
Very nice of you, even though I can't indulge. So we're gonna call the meeting to order with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, public comment? Not. We have a public birthday, so we're all gonna sing.
Oh, yeah.
Ready, Barb? Start us off.
Vonderous.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
All right, that's a good way to start the day. Fine, cheer.
Not asking again.
Thank you.
Can he have to do it by himself?
Yes, he'll be a solo.
That's a good idea.
All right. That's, uh, public comment period. Anybody?
We've had quite a bit already.
Yes, we have. Now we'll move on, um, to the October eighteenth board meeting agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll move the board meeting agenda. Is there anything, any additions?
No changes.
As presented?
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we'll look at the consent agenda. Andrew?
Madam Chair, today we have approval of the October fourth, twenty twenty-two board meeting minutes. Approval of social services, county and hospital accounts payable. Approval of the hire of a full-time assessor tech, Shelley Miller, B twenty-one, step three, twenty eighty-six an hour, effective October twenty-fourth. Approval of the hire of a full-time social worker, Lindsay Duvier, Duvier, C forty-one, step one, twenty-seven, twenty-nine per hour, October twenty-fourth. Approval of the hire of a full-time assistant public works superintendent, Troy Granland, C forty-one, step seven, thirty-two, fifty-nine an hour, again, October twenty-fourth, not due date. Rule of on- and off-sale licenses for Riverside, Sore and Tavern. And resolution twenty twenty-two thirty-two, the VFW off-site gambling application. That concludes the consent agenda.
Hey, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, Paul, on your, uh, where'd it go here? Social worker, um, item D there, is that a fail, are you backfilling a position or?
Yes, that was a part of, uh, that became open when we moved our supervisor, Kirsten Leggerman into a position.
Okay, that's what I was.
And was she an internal candidate? Did she work for us previously, the one, this?
Kirsten did, but.
Lindsey, I'm, the one you.
No, she did not.
She was outside. And I had the same question about Troy. He's been here, right?
Yep.
Any other questions?
The, yeah. VFW, is that for the fishing contest?
Yes, I'm assuming.
Very good.
Out on the ice. All right. If there's no more questions, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Oh, so I got my Madam Chair.
We have to do a resolution.
Oh, yeah, there's one resolution. That's right.
Motion by, um.
Birthday girl.
Birthday girl. Really, and second by Commissioner Schmidt. Corey, any, any more discussion? If not, Corey, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yay.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Yes.
Or Olberg?
Yes. Jump, jump in the gun today. Phil Smalls, Public Works Director, five-year construction plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Phil Smalls, Public Works Director. Number of items to go over this morning. First item is to consider the approval of our five-year highway construction plan, um, safe plan that we saw at a workshop a couple of weeks ago, if I remember right. Um, so it's a five-year plan we put together annually and come to the board for review. It kinda lays out our construction program for the next five years, our county state highways. Um, I also include some other information in it related to chunk highway projects or township projects that we're looking at, other things that may impact our region. Total plan, I'm estimating about twenty-five million dollars in the plan over the next five years. Of that number, Julie asked me a question. I was trying to do some quick math. Of that twenty-five million, uh, there's zero county dollars included in that construction, about a million dollars of other sources, so city and township funds. Um, the vast majority is state aid. There's a little bit of federal dollars, but, um, state aid, state bond money, town bridge account, which is state money, various forms of state highway user tax funds is probably ninety-five percent of the funding in that plan.
Thank you, Phil.
And no changes to the plan that you presented two weeks ago from the standpoint of what you showed us?
No changes, other than I did tweak some of the dollar amounts I had in my out years as we see costs increase. Um, one thing I found too is that plan as it stands is underfunded. About two million dollars underfunded. But we continue to seek external funding sources on every project as we have the ability to, so, um, we'll continue to try to fill that gap. But as it stands today, it's two million dollars behind.
When there's something for a township, I'm looking, of course, we, we represent our townships. If there's gonna be a bridge replaced or a project there, they have those funds specified and have had time to accrue money in those, for those projects, because some of these are like, whoa, now all of a sudden the township is going to have to come up with, you know, this chunk of money, but they are aware of that and.
Well, bridge, the bridge program specifically is pretty generous for townships. So the town bridge account is a piece of the highway user tax distribution fund that comes down from the state of Minnesota. Um, in short, townships are typically on the hook for twenty thousand dollars for a bridge project. It's a million-dollar bridge, the township will be responsible for about twenty thousand, and the balance comes from that township bridge fund they use for tax.
But generally, the townships are in on the planning of what improvements they're gonna do, working with you, right, on the parts they pay for?
We, so the county oversees all the bridge inspection and, um, not maintenance, but basically recommending when a bridge needs to be posted or replaced. So we'll let them know when they have a bridge getting near that point, so they can start planning.
And if they do township roads, that's their plan?
Separate. They still have access to things like State Park Road Account money, when a road comes close to a boat landing or DNR property. LRIP, local road improvement funds, the same pot of state bond money that we are accessing for except fourteen, um, reclaim next year. Townships have access to that funding source as well. Um, the townships do get a nominal state aid fee each year, but it's a pretty small dollar amount per mile.
But each township is aware when something is going to happen, so they.
Yeah, if it's, the only things that we would drive as the county would be bridges.
Bridges.
Anything else, the township, um, they're their own road authority. They have their own.
Thank you.
That's the point I was trying to make. They, they make those decisions except for.
So, for example, uh, the bridge of Manana there, that's, I would say, is one of the larger ones that you're gonna, I mean, but you, offhand, remember what the dollar amount on that?
Honestly, a million dollars.
I was gonna say it was a lot.
Think that was in here.
But that would give you, for the board, that'd give you, that's a big, that's a big bridge. So that would be a high end.
They get help with that, I think.
Yep, that's a million, a million dollars, and I expect of that million, ten thousand of construction funds will come from the township, ten thousand of design engineering funds will come from the township. And the balance, nine hundred and ninety thousand plus the remaining consultant fees, because we don't design bridges. We don't have a structural engineer and staff. So you'll have that million dollars plus a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in consultant fees by the time you're done. And by a million dollars, I mean, that's my best estimate at this point, is, you'll see, we talk about the box culvert. Numbers are moving, so we'll see where we end up.
That's a preference point, kinda, that's a major project, or that's, I think it was a hundred and eighty-foot span, that bridge.
Very long.
Big for a township road.
I'd say half a million is more typical for a township bridge, and then box culverts are usually in that one to two hundred thousand dollars, used to be. Maybe we're talking two to three now.
Do we need motions for this, or do we do, reach one separate? I see.
Madam Chair, move to approve Meeker County five-year highway construction plan.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bretison. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The item I have for consideration is to award.
Sorry, Phil. You pushed the button and then I did too.
Oh, okay. Michael, we're back. Award project SP zero four seven five nine one dash zero zero one. Um, so this is a city of Dassel, Safe Routes to School project. They, um, did the design through their consultant, advertised, and the city awarded the contract to their low-bid contractor last week. It is, being the city of Dassel, it's not a state aid city, they're less than five thousand population, the county is their sponsor, so these funds, these are federal safety funds, will flow through Meeker County, back to the city. That's why the, the, um, county must also award this contract. Um, engineer's estimate on the project was about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and the low bid was Landweire of St. Cloud at four hundred and ninety-one thousand sixty-eight dollars and nine cents. About fifteen percent over the estimate that they had. Um, but they were able to get additional federal funds to cover the majority of that gap. I believe this is a ninety-ten split, so the federal safety money will cover ninety percent of the project, and the city will be responsible for ten percent. The county has no funds wrapped up in this project.
Safe routes to school, was that a totally federal program, or was that also sponsored by the state?
Federal.
All federal, okay.
There's a similar, kind of parallel pot of funding called transportation alternatives. They kinda get mixed in or bangled, so like, some of this officially is actually transportation alternatives funds, but it's all federal funds. Um, they're, they run together.
Madam Chair, move to award SP zero four seven dash five nine one dash zero zero one to Landweire of St. Cloud, Minnesota, for an estimated total of four hundred and ninety-one thousand sixty-eight dollars and nine cents.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any other discussion? So we're just a pass-through for the dollar.
We're sponsored.
It looks like they've got a, it looks like they got a, I mean, it looks nice, the project they're doing.
It, it's meant to have, well, safe routes to school, safe sidewalks and pedestrian access, that's the ways.
Well, we had a couple of ditch meetings, I think, where we drove by all the construction going on over there, so, yeah.
Cool.
That's tight anyway, so that's a good place to have this project.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Who's pressing the button over there?
I did it this time.
I learned my lesson.
You're a fast learner.
I agree to consider the award of project SAP zero four seven zero six four dash zero two one. Um, I, it should be six one four, if it matters. It's a replacement of bridge number nine zero nine seven nine. Uh, this is the existing metal culvert between the lakes of Stella and Washington that we've discussed a number of times. We advertised the project. Got five bids, actually, so pretty competitive, um, significantly higher than our estimate. We had an estimate of a hundred and forty thousand dollars about a year ago. We revised our estimate to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars this past March, based on feedback we got from contractors and manufacturers. And since that time, the low bid we acquired with this was three hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Being we got five bids and they're relatively close together to each other, I believe that is the market, that is the price of business right now. I know box culverts are tough to come by. We're told if we get our contract moving now, we'll get a culvert by the end of July at the earliest. And, um, I wanna get moving on this because we plan to reclaim that road next summer. So, um, yeah, the price is high. We did get, um, additional bridge bond funds to cover part of the overage, so I don't think I have the exact splits in here. Well, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that three fifty-five would be from our county state aid pot. The remaining amount would be from, uh, bridge bond funds.
Wow. Discussion?
Had we not gone with the box culvert, would it have been cheaper?
What, I guess, going with the bridge?
Yeah.
I did price out, so after I opened these bids, I priced out a short timber bridge, and it was going to be a two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar project, most likely. So considering the life we would get out of that versus a concrete box, I didn't pursue that any further. But that was my thought as well. I wanted to look at alternatives. Yeah, this is a little more expensive than timber, but a concrete box culvert, the life on that is, I don't know what'll fail, you know, it should be a hundred-plus years.
That was gonna be my question too, but you already checked, so.
You'll still be here.
Don't say that, Steve. Don't say that.
I'll move to, SAP, four four seven six one four oh two one to Landweire, St. Cloud, for estimate of three hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and two dollars and fifty cents.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bretison. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Next item is related, so this is to consider the approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three, um, for local bridge replacement program grant agreement. So the portion of the funding I talked about from the state, the state bond fund, that's part of the local bridge replacement program. Um, being it is bond funds with the state, we need an agreement to execute that bond, bond transfer. So that's what this is. And there's a resolution that goes along with the agreement. So the grant amount is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Move to approve the resolution, um, on the local bridge replacement grant program agreement, associated resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bretison. Questions, discussion?
Now, this is so that we can, we can get a hold of money for these various projects.
Yep, this is a bond agreement with the state, just for that box culvert project we just awarded.
Just the one.
So for the share that we've been awarded from the state bond fund for that bridge, we need a grant, a bond agreement with the state.
Any other questions? Not, Corey, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Consider resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four, deficient bridge replacement. So what this is, is a resolution I try to bring in annually to update our deficient bridge list. You'll see a number of bridges, both on the county and township system. On this sheet, it's for us to plan and prioritize, and it is a piece required by the state when we try to access funds for township bridge money, for state bridge bonds. Um, so it's a planning tool for us, and, uh, it's a paper that the state requires of us. Um, I, we did approve one back in February, but the state commented on, they have a new format. And I thought, being we're looking at bridges right now and we're updating five-year plan, I thought it was a good time to go ahead and bring in a fresh one.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to, uh, approve resolution identifying deficient bridges in Meeker County.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Questions, discussion?
I see that on county state aid highway sixteen crosses over the county ditch seventeen. Will the county ditch people along there then encumber some of this cost?
No, so structures under roadways are the responsibility of the road authority. So the ditch system would not be assessed for a bridge or culvert project.
But some will to the township.
If it's on a township road, you said in DNR sixteen?
Yeah.
That'll just be, um, state aid funds, most likely, and some bridge bond money, not, not township cost.
Any other questions? Corey, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes. Anything else, Phil?
That's all I had. You got ten minutes, I can't.
Yeah, we got some time, if anybody wants to.
Oh, we only got two small ones from.
You can dance or you can't?
I, I thought we could jump onto the CD seventeen, do the, go into the ditch, deal with the CD seventeen, and then go back to the fifteen.
Yeah, yeah.
So we are gonna go into the, being the ditch authority, we can do that? Okay, I'd look for a motion. Do I need a motion to recess? No. We're recessing the county board and convening as the county ditch authority, and we have Mr. Condon is here. I don't think she should be allowed to answer those questions anymore.
The power quizz this morning, on my birthday. I'm gonna shopping.
Anyway, here we are, ditch authority.
Good morning, everyone. I'm the ditch inspector, um, for you this morning. Uh, there's some work to be done on county ditch seventeen. Earlier this year, we had the cookie cutter go through, uh, do what he could do. Um, he was not able to do the very outlet end, nor it's a three hundred tenth street. Uh, the river was just too high, um, so he only can get down about two and a half feet with that machine, and the water was deeper than that. So he wasn't gonna be, any, gonna have any effect at all, so we didn't do anything during that time. Um, and then we did the rest of the ditch, um, where the water eventually went. And there was one stretch where it was closer to Highway thirty-four, where it was a little more open, there were, people like floating chunks of cattails, some just sediment. He went through and did the work, um, but that, that stretch kinda sedimented back in and kinda filled back in with some of those cattail chunks, so it kinda made a hump right there. Um, so what I, I got a quote for going in with swamp mats to, uh, clean out the section that dealt with it, and then that, from where that hump is to Highway, uh, thirty-four. Um, in the map that I provided, those are the areas highlighted in blue. Those should, by cleaning out those two sections, should get this ditch back to flowing pretty good, um, back to where it needs to be. Although it's helped, that cookie cutter machine helped a lot. I've heard some pretty good positive feedback from people saying that it definitely helped. But these are just a couple areas that we need to be, essentially touch up on what he can get, and again, there was a stretch that he had warned me, even though he's like, it might soak back in, just given, uh, the conditions of that. And then there's also a landowner that, um, he has some property just on the west side of thirty-four. Um, he does construction, and he has machinery and stuff. He's voiced an opinion about wanting to put it back to original alignment where it goes through the wetland. Um, I told him I can get a quote for that, and, you know, I told him my main concern is that the ditch has, provides the drainage, uh, the landowners need. Whether it's in the reroute that it, uh, the water had already naturally taken, or if it's where it originally was. Whether it's worth the extra cost of just moving the ditch over, I didn't think was cost-effective, but he was pretty adamant about it, so I got a quote for it and brought it to you guys' attention in ways, and that's something for you guys to decide. Um, the only thing I brought for a motion to get approved is the blue highlighted areas. Uh, we got a quote from Record Excavating for seventeen thousand dollars. They're the only ones that can get in there in a relatively timely manner. There's only two contractors I know that have swamp mats. And he's the only one that can get in there within a reasonable amount of time, um, to get the work done.
It's dry right now, too.
Yeah, on the outlet end, there's about a three-foot beaver dam that showed up about two weeks ago, so it's not very dry right there.
But in gen, I mean.
In general, it's dry, um, but he still will need swamp mats in order to be able to, um, but yeah, it's a good time to do it. Um, he's hoping to get in there sometime in November, so.
Did you call Keith Fortune? Is he our, is he the fellow that goes trapping the beavers, or did we have a contract with someone that takes care of those?
No, I've been having, uh, Jake Dagnar. He's on our maintenance crew. He does a lot of trapping, and, um, he trapped for me this spring and has been doing some throughout the year.
So this additional work that they want done would be take, paid by?
It would have to be paid by the ditch system.
So you would have to have the agreement of other, many people? I mean, I, I don't know how this works, if somebody's requesting work.
I think in that second case, we would almost have to bring an informational meeting.
That's what I'm asking you, yeah.
Because it is not ultimately necessary, but there's some validity to putting it back where it was originally. And we believe he was willing to come and speak, but, um, chose not to this morning.
Yep.
So what's the, what's the upside to doing what he's requesting? I mean, is there?
He's putting it back in the original location.
But now, you were explaining to me that now it flows the natural route, the way that it wants to flow, whereas if you put it back to how it was originally, that wouldn't be the natural flow, and it would be to the tune of almost twenty thousand dollars, which would be a cost encumbered, encumbered by all persons along the ditch. It would be dispersed to all.
Yeah, the ditch used to go straight, and just over time, it naturally rerouted itself. It's not the first ditch that has done that. That have done that, just because they've been neglected, you know, for a hundred years.
So, John, the green line is where it is today, or the red line?
The red line is.
Current?
The current, where it is. Um, that was where the natural, where it was currently going before we went and did the work, is where the water flow was going. The reason why he didn't follow where the green line goes, where it originally was, is because it's just a little bit higher, so it was firmer, and he just couldn't, that machine is not cut through, meant to cut through like firm soil. It's loose cattails. So he just followed the natural, where the water was currently going, made it easy for him, so it's more, you know, more cost-effective as well. I told him my main concern is as long as we get the drainage we're looking for, I didn't see the problem with that.
Well, I'm assuming that it not, in the firmer ground, and two, that's where the trees and brush grow, usually.
Cur, usually, currently, there is not any there, actually. I'm surprised by that, but they're current, it's probably because it's been backed up enough in the last recent years, that it's just kept him ground out.
An answer to your question is, individual would like to have this considered. He could petition the drainage authority, and then we would have to follow through all of the different steps that were.
That's gonna take DNR involvement, and, I mean, everybody's gonna have to sign off, that's all.
So we can't do the work you're recommending until?
No, the second one.
The second one.
No, I understand that, but, but procedurally, is my question, Barb, so.
Traditionally, I think we could move ahead if the authority chose that that was the right thing to do. However, if this individual pursues it further by form of a petition, then you're required to go forward.
Okay, that, that was my question.
And at this point, it's informal.
Okay.
I mean, I would, I think, in my opinion, my personal opinion is that that's up to him to petition. I mean, it's not up to this board to do the petition.
That was my question, procedurally, so we don't have to recommend it or not. He has to petition us if he's entered.
I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention, and that's why.
Cause we might, we might say, go ahead, and DNR or somebody will step in and say, no, you're not doing it.
No, I understand that, I just.
That's on his, that's his burden of proof.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thing two is, uh, DNR protected waterway, like, the outside line is basically where the blue starts. So once you get into the green, it's all a DNR protected waterway that would have to be permitted. You know, you're hauling spoils out, that's why that cost estimate is higher for the amount of, yeah.
So we don't have any obligation?
Not at this point, so, but you're giving us direction to go back to him and indicate that we feel that the, the request, the informal request, and if he would like to go further, he will need to do a petition, and at that point, we need to take all the steps that you're talking about, because they were required.
Okay. So today, we're just looking at the, uh.
The blue section areas, um, cause yeah, they are, they are impeding, um, outlet end was not done. And the other stretch, there are still some issues that came up afterwards. They are impeding, you know, drainage, they need to be done, um, so.
All right.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the quote for. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the quote from Recker Excavating for seventeen thousand four hundred dollars for the work to be completed at the outlet end and by Casaw thirty-four.
Yeah, looking for a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Recker for seventeen thousand four hundred for the work to be completed at the outlet end and by, uh, Casaw thirty-four.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, go ahead.
One, one last question. These were all costs that were associated with all the things we did before, just that we couldn't get the cookie cutter up there, correct?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that so that we weren't.
Yep, and the outlet end north of three hundred tenth was not included on his original quote, the cookie cutter's quote. We were only going to include that if he was able to get in there, and that would have been additional about the seventy-five thousand. Um, so that was not included as part of it.
Okay. Questions? Any other questions? Not all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're gonna continue the public hearing on county ditch fifteen repair.
And we should have online both, um, Joe Lewis and Kale.
Joe and Kale.
For us?
Okay.
Morning Kale, can you hear us?
Hey, can, can you hear me?
Yeah. Corey, can you turn up the volume on the?
Little bit more volume?
Probably on the crush drawn system.
Is that any better?
Good morning. No.
It's quiet.
We can hear you, it's just quiet. We'll get you.
I can hear him.
Tuned up.
Can you hear that? Kinda getting old. Keep talking Kale so we can test the volume.
Volume up as high as we can go on the.
Well, I don't see the board, but I do see Barbara John, so I, I know that the, the brain trust in the room right now.
It's getting a little better now.
Can you hear me better now?
A little.
Little bit.
Okay.
I mean, it may be his volume.
I don't think.
Just have to talk louder, Kale.
Talk louder. Is this better?
Oh, really got it.
Okay.
Good job, Andrew.
We gotcha.
We got you now.
Excellent.
And are we being joined by anyone else? Is Joe Lewis joining us or no?
Joe wanted the link, but I don't see that he has requested it, so.
All right, go ahead, Kale.
Okay, thanks board. So, we're here today because at the public hearing on, uh, the repair of county ditch fifteen, following the board hearing for its engineer and, uh, reviewing and receiving the written comments from DNR, the written comments, um, from Mr. Leland Johnson and then the oral public comments at the hearing, the board adopted a motion to continue the hearing to today's date and instructed its staff to prepare draft findings and in order directing the repair of county ditch fifteen consistent with those proceedings. Since the close of that public comment period and the continuation of that hearing, Joe Lewis met with DNR and reviewed their letter. Um, and he worked out with them any of the remaining concerns about elevations. And he submitted a, a short two-page addendum to his engineering report, um, just making some fairly minor modifications to the scope of the repair in order to ensure that the repair satisfies any concerns DNR would have over giving permission for the repair because of the impact, uh, potential impact, I'll say, to public water basins. So, following that, uh, we've worked with Joe Lewis and with John Condon to prepare some draft findings and in order to, um, present to the board. And unless there's any questions before I go into that, I'm prepared to go through the highlights of those draft findings with you now.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So, you've had the draft findings in your board packet. Um, I'm gonna say that paragraphs one through twenty are primarily procedural, just documenting how this process was initiated by both a petition from landowners and by drainage inspection reports that came out of requests from landowners to have the system reviewed and repaired. Um, and so we've put that detailed procedural history in the findings. But I wanna point out on paragraph twenty-one, we've just summarized the DNR concerns in their comment letter about the runout elevations for public water basins and where DNR has noted their position on letters of permission that, um, are needed in order to complete this work. If we go down to paragraph twenty-three, um, we've provided a summary of Leland Johnson's comments that he made at the public hearing and then the email that he wanted read into the record. Um, this is set up in that paragraph with our summary of Mr. Johnson's comments and then in italics, um, a recommended response for the board um, to each of those comments. So, we've included a response to his comment about having never accepted payment for the buffer. Um, that's really a comment about a prior proceeding that's already been completed. Uh, his comment about, um, where the costs for funding of the repair should come from. Um, his comment about USDA CRP program and finally, his comment about, um, the scope of the repair and, and his desire to send the board back and, and look for a new alternative, a third less invasive alternative. Um, so if the board has any questions about those responses, I can certainly go through those. Um, in paragraph twenty-five, we've included, um, your engineer, Joe Lewis's response to each of DNR's comments on the runout elevation for the public water basins. So, this is taken from the information that's in the addendum to the engineer's report and it documents the approved scope of repair to satisfy DNR for the runout elevation for each of these basins. Um, in paragraph twenty-six, we'll attach to these draft findings in order, the engineer's report and the addendum. Um, so that there's always a clear record in the drainage system record as to the repair that was done under this proceeding. And then finally, the statute requires that the board make the findings, uh, in paragraphs thirty through thirty-three in order to proceed. So, in paragraph thirty, that's a finding that based on all the evidence in the record, the system needs repair.
Kale, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you share your screen so everyone can see what it is you're talking about?
I'm struggling. I think everyone's struggling to find one. I don't have it. I don't.
Yeah, the, the findings weren't in the packet that was sent to us.
We have twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The findings were?
No, they were not.
No, they're not.
They're not in.
They're not electronic or.
Should I just go make this not be put forward because it's?
We got them on the screen too, but yeah, that would probably be.
It would be, yeah. Can you make that a little larger so I can look at?
Do you want me to do it?
Yep. Zoom in on my end.
I'm searching for paragraphs of pages and I'm.
Nah, I'm sorry about that.
Can't be just me, Kim.
I thought I checked in to make sure they were there.
I will, uh, I'll, I'll go through these critical findings and then I'll go back up and show the board where those, um, DNR comments and responses were and then Leland Johnson as well. Can the board see what's on the screen now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, these four findings here are the critical findings, oops, required by statute, page, uh, paragraphs thirty through thirty-three. First, it's a finding that county ditch fifteen needs repair. Um, second, in paragraph thirty-one, it's finding that the repair is feasible, practical and in the best interest of the drainage system and is conducive to public health and promotes general welfare. Um, paragraph thirty-two, um, it's finding that the repair is necessary to prevent further deterioration and restore the effectiveness of the drainage system and to remove obstructions in order to maintain the drainage system's efficiency. And then finally, the most critical finding, that the repair is necessary for the best interest of the affected property owners. And the basis for these four findings is in the engineer's report and the addendum, the drainage inspection reports and the testimony that was received at the public hearing. Um, so, I'll just scroll back up to in the findings, paragraph twenty-five. We've included a summary, as I mentioned, from the addendum filed by Joe Lewis. And this is a summary of the modifications to the repair report that are being recommended by Joe Lewis in response to the DNR's comments. And this primarily has to do with the accepted control elevation for the runout of the five public water basins along the system that would allow the DNR to let this proceed under the, you know, more efficient letter of permission process rather than needing to go, um, get a challenging, uh, public waters permit to change any of these basin levels. And so, your engineer has said that there's, um, some minor modifications we could do to the scope of repair in order to still maintain the efficiency level we're trying to get out of the system. Um, but without triggering concerns of DNR about major impacts or substantial impacts to each of these public water basins. So, we've documented it here, so there's a clear record moving forward. You know, the elevations of the culverts or the ditch bottoms or things that are, are pulled directly from that engineer's addendum. Here in paragraph twenty-three is a summary of Mr. Johnson's comments at the public hearing. And then in italics, um, our proposed board response to each of those comments. So, in his comment that he's never accepted payment for the buffer, we've just pointed out that that is referring to a different proceeding. It's the redetermination of benefits where one oh three E point oh two one required the board to acquire that buffer and offer up that payment. Um, that wasn't something discretionary by the board. You, you had to do that by statute. And then we point out that, you know, no appeals of that order were taken. Uh, Mr. Johnson points out or cites eminent domain, um, but the case law is pretty clear. And the eminent domain statute right here is very clear that those eminent domain proceedings do not apply to chapter one oh three E, the drainage code. Uh, Mr. Johnson made a comment about public funds should be used, so we've just included a reference to the statute that says all fees and costs should be assessed against the benefited property owners. Again, you know, not an area the board has discretion to, to change. Um, Mr. Johnson made a comment about benefits and the USDA conservation reserve program. Um, so again, we've pointed out that this is a repair proceeding. There is no determination here of benefits that all took, took place originally at establishment of the system long ago. And then again, at the most recent redetermination of benefits where there was no appeal. Uh, so nothing is changing with the determination of benefits here. And then finally, Mr. Johnson advocated that the board should request a third less invasive and less costly approach. Um, and we've just pointed out that it, you know, one oh three E seven oh five subdivision one requires the drainage authority to keep the system repaired. Uh, and it seems that Mr. Johnson advocated that, that we forego some of those repairs, um, due to cost. Um, so that's what we're proposing in response there. Um, everything else procedurally is detailed in here, um, up to paragraph one twenty. Um, then we go through the DNR comments, the necessary findings, and that is the order. So, the proposed order is that the board would, uh, order the implementation of the repair consistent with your engineer's recommendations in the repair report as modified by the addendum. That's the minor adjustment in some elevations and control structures for those public water basins. That the engineer, the auditor, the drainage inspector and your attorney coordinate and take all subsequent actions necessary to implement the repair in a manner consistent compliant with existing law. That would be putting the repair contract out for bid and, um, bringing those bids back to the board so that you can then adopt, uh, a, a lowest bid for the repair. Um, the drainage authority reserves the right to itself then to take all actions that it needs to take and that can't be delegated. So, that would be bringing back those bids, holding a final contract completion hearing once the repair is complete. Um, and then finally, the final order is authorizing the expenditures for the repair. That will allow your auditor to put the costs on, um, to the drainage system account. If that doesn't have sufficient funds, she'll bring that back to you then for a levy to cover those costs. Um, and now that I've said that, John, is this one going out for bids or is this below the threshold that you're working with local contractors on quotes?
We plan to put it into a few different phases. Um, like tree removal will be separate from the excavation. I am anticipating that it should be below the threshold that we'll need to put it up for official bids.
Okay. So, this will, um, allow John to go, you know, get those bids and, and, and bring them back to the board for approval if they're above any thresholds that he doesn't have authority for. Um, but since we're not exceeding the contract threshold, it won't be going out for a public bid. So, that's the proposal. Are there, um, I can take questions now from the board on that.
Questions anyway?
Um, but ultimately, we're looking for a motion to approve and a roll call vote on that motion.
Does anyone have questions?
I'm Claire Ahn.
That, this, this ditch, almost entirely in District Three's area. Um, I have heard from only a couple of landowners. One of them actually took me out to show me not just where it wasn't working, showed me where it was working. But, um, it is in need of repair just as the report shows. Uh, I had, did have a conversation with Mr. Johnson also on two or three different occasions, but have not heard negative comments from anyone within my district other than Mr. Johnson not wanting to move forward, so.
Do we have any idea how much the cost of this project is total being, I mean, I'm assuming, at what cost do you have to take bids?
Like at each, if it's over a hundred and seventy-five thousand for each project, then it has to go to official bids, put the public bid.
So, you're just splitting it up?
Yep, we're gonna do it in a few phases.
Overall?
On keeping the tree removal separate from like the excavation part.
Do you have a time period where it'll be?
Um, I, after this is, once this is approved, I'll be sending out the bids for tree removal.
Okay.
Very shortly after.
And just to clarify and to be clear, the, the purpose of splitting it up is not to avoid the responsibility, do public bids, but it's to spread the cost over multiple years.
That was a bit of my question. I should have asked a better.
Yeah, like, I'm anticipating it'll take three or four years.
Okay.
To get everything completed.
Spread, spread the cost out for the landowners instead of having it be one big bill.
So, that's not gonna be a huge, okay. That was my question.
So, we're hoping to do a certified for the tree removal, page twenty-three, and then work on different phases because they still are, um, paying months of due termination to the repair report, so there's a lot of cost going to these landowners. One of the things we did here was to definitely spread the cost.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? If not, I would call for the question.
Did you get a motion?
I'm looking. I'm trying to get a motion, I guess that's what I should say.
Clarification, Mr. Johnson in the report is not Mr. Johnson, the commissioner.
Mr. Leland Johnson.
Thanks for clarifying that. So, I'll be looking for a motion. Sorry.
I move to adopt the findings in order for implementation of repairs for county ditch fifteen, consistent with the recommendations of the repair as presented by Houston Engineering, Inc., and modified by the addendum.
Motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Bredesen. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson and I'm, is this a resolution?
Yes, roll call vote.
Corey?
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes. Anything else? If not, we'll adjourn the county ditch authority and reconvene the county board.
Thank you, Kale.
Thank you, Kale.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Greg Schultz, Land Use Records Director.
Morning. Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. This morning, I got a couple things for the board. First one is the official use permit for the Booth Land Meeting Project on Lake Nerville. This was after the fact. Project ordered by one of the neighbors.
Is there going to be a fine?
Wasn't you, was it?
Wasn't me, no.
It's an extra, it's nine hundred dollars for the fee of four ninety-six.
Cabo. But it did state in there that when they started out, they didn't expect it to be?
Yes.
Is, did you feel on your observation that that was the case?
Don't know, cause we didn't get out there till, till they were seeding the grass. Yeah, the contractor stated that it started as a small project and as it went on, always kept on adding more additions to the project until it got to be what you see here now. It's a really nice project. It looks really nice. So, I don't know what it looked like ahead of. It's a really nice project. It looks really nice. So I don't know what it looked like ahead of time, but now Paul got out there when he was seeding the grass. Can see him seeding right there measuring out. That was actually the point where the grass seed hydro seed was always done. That's the point where it was defined, so.
Looks nice.
Yeah, it's very nice. It wasn't intrusive on the neighboring properties and the sideline issues. Nothing's over four feet. You can't need an engineer or drawings or anything like that, so.
All right.
They've moved fairly new owners from the property. They've asked them the full process of getting approved or anything in the shoreline. It's quite a lot of fees.
And legitimately, it may have started very small and grew.
Yes.
Because you can move, what, ten cubic yards?
Yeah, it's only about a dump truck and the materials before you have.
Perfect.
Most of my projects start that way.
And then they they mushroom.
Hey, got a motion?
Um I gotta get there.
I will move to approve application for conditional use permit to move more than ten cubic yards of material in a shoreline impact zone and fifty cubic yards of material of shoreline district of the recreational development Lake Minnebell. The conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Any further discussion?
There there will be a fine paid or not?
Paid upfront.
They double the cost. That's the.
Nine hundred dollars, really, four ninety-six.
It's usually half that if they apply for it.
Four ninety-six.
Okay. And I always look to see how the planning commission votes on something, and these projects are usually a benefit to the shoreline. Yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comment on this at all, so.
Does that mean it's an approval or what does that mean? I don't either. I always wonder that.
So just out of curiosity, what if he came back uh and you got a letter two weeks from now saying, no, I disapprove of this?
I mean.
I mean, he doesn't respond, but we have to keep moving, so.
I'm gonna assume that means.
I mean, ultimately, their permitting process is separate from our permitting process. So things, they could get a permit from us, they could get a CUP from us, but if they can't satisfy the needs of the DNR permit, then they can't proceed. You know, we are not necessarily the final authority on all of this.
But they only need a DNR permit if.
It's used to the water.
Yeah, so if they bring their rip rap right down to the edge of the water, which is very far out this year.
Yeah.
Or are you using ordinary high water as?
Ordinary high water.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Next item is a McLean's window property for a second dwelling for a blood relative. Southwest of Lake Ripley. Building is cleared out for either a future house or another trailer to double wide. They're not sure at this point what they're going to do. And grew up on that property as a fourth generation. It'll be on that property, she stated. Take care of her elderly parents.
My question on the on the front page here, there is no information on septic system for the dwelling currently on site. Why not? And if they're going to move in another dwelling, will there not have to be septic updates?
That'll be a different septic system.
I see.
To support the new dwelling. Since there's no addition on the existing dwelling, no building permit, there's no need for septic on the side. Far end of it, but he'll have to tie, he'll have to have a whole new system um for the new dwelling that's brought on.
So the existing.
If it's existing system, if we do have information on it, if it's big enough to tie in the the new dwelling, we could tie it in, but we don't have any information on that, so it's unlikely it's gonna be large enough to support a new dwelling.
But ultimately, that issue would be addressed and resolved as part of the permitting process for the new dwelling.
The building permit side of it.
This isn't close enough to the lake, so that's going to affect.
It's out of the shoreline district.
So in other words, that the second dwelling has its own septic system and that does not trigger a requirement to upgrade to existing one. Okay.
Madam Chair, move to approve an interim use permit application to create a twenty-year temporary second dwelling for a blood relative at six oh two one nine two hundred and forty-fifth Street, Litchfield, Minnesota, with the conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. I just may say you're probably gonna be seeing a lot more of these in light of what's happening with long-term care facilities and stuff, so I I I think it's gonna be a new way of life for a while, so.
It may be beneficial to the existing structure, don't they? There's something if they could put one in for both houses that, you know, I mean, you might long term save some money.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is Mikel with us, sir?
Uh I don't see her right now, so I can take this item.
Okay, Mikel, take it away.
So uh as you are well aware, we've been working diligently towards um moving county towards Mikel being here.
Someone was being chatty Cathy out there.
That's that's a shock. That's a real shock.
Oh, boy.
Oh, good morning, Mikel Johnson, Resources Coordinator. I have uh before you today two policies. One is an updated policy and one is a new policy um seeking approval for, so um it's exciting that we're at this point. Uh we've been working towards pay for performance over the course of the last year, so we've done a lot to get to this point. Um we started a committee and we have um established metrics for updated metrics for the non-union employees for their performance evaluations. I have started to update the system with that, the online software with that. Um we have updated the performance ratings and their definitions. Uh we've conducted employee information session meetings and we will continue to have more of those as well uh for actual performance evaluation training itself as far as how to conduct employee evaluations and all of those, so that will be for both supervisors and employees. So as part of that process, these policies are being presented. So the first is an update to the compensation policy. So this is an overall update to the language itself as far as changing it from um step schedule increases to uh salary adjustments. Um it adds performance language, which outlines a process that will be followed for doing the performance based increases. It establishes the salary bands within the salary ranges. Establishes the percentages that employees may receive dependent on whether they meet expectations or exceed expectations. And then it also establishes the process for addressing employees who earn a performance rating of needs improvement. So just gets all of those things added. Uh then the performance management policy is a new policy, so that establishes the processes for completing performance evaluations for both employees and supervisors. It establishes the three performance categories that performance will be uh placed into. Establishes the process for addressing employees who earn a performance rating of needs improvement. Uh establishes the process for how and how performance evaluations are handled when transfers and promotions occur. And then it also establishes an appeals process. So I don't know if you wanna look at those separately or together.
I I just wanted to note that, you know, we've we've done a lot of work as a group to develop the framework of these policies. We discussed this with with you um several months ago in a work session format. We held off at that point on bringing the policies forward until we were able to continue through this process and flesh out any challenges that we were running into. And we've made some minor tweaks into it. So um we've had, like I said, a lot of effort that's gone into it with this committee uh and then our department heads as well. So very appreciative for the work that they've put into it, um and this is the the fruit of that labor.
So you indicated that you had had some employee meetings? And how was it received?
So we met with employees back in, I think, May because um that was the first step in kind of talking about these are the changes that we're gonna be pursuing, and this is the work that we're gonna be asking of you, which is to help develop those um individual performance metrics. Uh I would say at the time, we we received generally positive feedback from staff. Um there's concern and a bit of trepidation with any change. And, you know, we're we're continuing to manage our way through that. The next step in this, as Mikel mentioned, is providing training for supervisors and staff. And it'll be another opportunity to touch on this again. It's been a while since most of our staff have thought about it or heard about it, since they developed these individual metrics. Um and so it'll be another chance for us to reinforce what it is that we're trying to do. The best practice way of going about developing these um evaluations and then um provide opportunity for for feedback at that point. So we haven't received a lot of negative feedback, but there has been some concern addressed, as expected.
And this is this is all for non-union?
Correct.
Correct.
People.
Well.
And I was going to ask about training and, of course, if I were a department head, I would want some training on a rubric of some type for guiding me in something like this. And Brandy, this is all, we're legally okay with in putting forward a system like this for evaluating employees? There won't be any backlash of any kind or?
So I think one of the individuals that was maybe concerned about some of the discussion items that we had was myself, and I think we've worked through some of those issues. Um but I think.
Really? We. So I can I can say, let me jump in on that question real quick. I can say we are not breaking new ground with this. We have, there are several other counties across the state that have pursued a pay for performance model. And we are, we have taken what we like out of their models and we've tweaked it to make it what will work best for us.
And so so I'm on a couple other boards that have been working on this for a couple of years. It's not an instant thing that's gonna happen. Some of our concerns are always that everybody is doing the evaluations in the same manner. You know, you have to really be able to put personalities aside and do that. Another concern that's come up a lot when we talk about needs improvement. I don't want someone to be put in a situation where here's your evaluation and you need improvement. In other words, you're not just gonna sit down. If you see an employee that isn't doing well, that's gonna be addressed at the time, not just at their annual evaluation. I think that, and I appreciate all the work you've done, because I think this is a great way to go, but like I said, I think it's a slow process. And we have to make sure that we reward and that we work with the people that. And I think if we present it in a positive manner, it's a big change. I mean, for sure, it's a big change, but it makes a lot of sense to me. So I appreciate all the work you've done on it.
And one of the things that that we will do and we're cognizant of is that we need to evaluate our process as well. You know, we can't just say, here's your training and then walk away and say, you know how to do this now. You know, we've throughout the time that I have been here, you know, Mikel has done a great great job with our department heads of reinforcing some of those best practices and, you know, like you mentioned, ensuring that issues are being addressed throughout the year and not just at the time of that evaluation. And what's nice about the policies is it develops a step-by-step process of what we do if we do have an employee who has an overall rating and needs expectations, so that we can get them to a point where they're meeting expectations.
Exactly. And and we're gonna work toward that.
Yep.
I think long term, it's a beneficial for both labor and management.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it takes us out of a box.
I agree.
You know.
So what's the maximum number of subordinates anyone will do evaluations on?
Because it's non-union, I think I would have the most.
Is there an ideal number?
Too many is the is the fear, not too few, it's too many.
Yeah, but what? So we don't have a target number, I would say. Once we start to get to a point where we have unions buying into this, some of our groups do become a little bit bigger, especially in social services and in public works. When we were talking about this with our public work staff, this was part of the reason why the assistant superintendent position was brought into that supervisory level to formally supervise the road crew. Because otherwise, that superintendent was, you know, eighteen people, I think. So it was a lot. It was too many. So um you know, right size and some of those things are things that we've been looking to do anyway. Because beyond just doing the evaluations, effectively supervising eighteen people is is unwieldy, so.
I'm assuming Health and Human Services is one of is one of the larger departments. For its numbers of them. I'm assuming your department has a lot a lot of employees, but right, but they're all union, correct?
Correct.
So they're not part of this, right?
Not at this time, yeah.
Except for those supervisors.
The supervisors.
And through the um kind of the the reorganization reshuffling that that Paul's been doing with his department, you know, long term, we have one group that's bigger right now because we're going through this this reorganization process. That'll be split out a little bit more too.
And to answer your earlier question, part of our reorganization has been to ensure adequate supervision time so that we can have those dialogues and staff and support them to be successful with us.
That's that's a very important part of this whole program.
Yep.
Nobody is just comes in and says, well, okay. Don't get anything because you showed no improvement.
Will will you be doing the training?
Correct. Yeah, and so we we drafted up a um guide like you were talking about. We have a performance management guide. So that will walk people through what that guide is essentially. So it talks about things like radar errors, like you were talking about, um talks about how to have that discussion with that employee, what how should you meet, you know, some tips for how how to do that. Um it talks about uh completing that performance evaluation and having that good honest feedback. Um so we'll have a lot of those discussions about having those those honest conversations, because those are difficult to have.
I bet.
Um but to have those honest conversations is also being kind to that employee because they need to know what the expectations are. They need to know um how they can be improving and what they're doing that's not meeting or is doing great, you know, it's not all just, you know, we have some awesome people too, so, you know, either side of that spectrum, but.
And you didn't have to invent the wheel there. Like you were saying, you've taken the good from other areas and brought them here to to work with.
I went to a, I guess it was at an AMC meeting, this gotta be eight, nine years ago I went. And they had a meeting about, and very few counties were trying it at the time, now more are. But what stuck out to me, and I was a pretty new commissioner, she said an evaluation should never be a surprise when a person gets it, right? So when you sit down and do an evaluation with somebody, they already know what's coming and that. And she said the biggest, and I can't remember what county it was, but it was a larger county. And they said, teaching the evaluating part to supervi- to supervisors was one of the most difficult parts because you have personalities and you, that can't come into the mix. So that's gonna be a big job for you, right, Mikel?
Will employees be given a copy of this rubric of the guide that they're, yeah, that's.
It's important.
And and that's.
Transparency is very.
The intention is to do training with employees as well, so they have, they know what to expect.
They know.
And and one of the things that I wanna make sure we don't get lost in all this is we've been doing evaluations for several years now.
Right.
Um so the idea of doing evaluations is not new. So we've been kind of taking steps to move ourselves into this, so we're in a good spot.
Good.
I think if you present it in a positive manner, it's something that's gonna help you, you're gonna, you know, we're not just gonna say everybody gets two percent this year.
Can I think focusing on the positive?
Absolutely.
That we, you know, that the good work that they're already doing and that we are able to then recognize them further for the good work that they're already doing.
I agree. I appreciate all your work. I'm surprised you have this much done already, so. Any other questions? If not, we have been looking for a motion, I guess.
Move to approve.
I I move to approve the updated compensation policy and new performance management policy.
Motion by Commissioner Bredesen. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and thank everyone on the committee. Um should we have a little break first?
Yes.
So yes, fair, I guess.
Or do you want, or do you wanna move to close and then?
Let's do the motion so we can capture on this video and then we can switch it.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to close the session for the purpose of labor negotiation strategy under Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero three.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I hear a?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. All in favor?
Yeah, before.
Aye.
Oops, hold.
Before there's a vote, can I just do a friendly reminder that we are only to discuss items that fall underneath this um closed meeting section, which would be regarding labor negotiations. We're gonna keep our conversations strictly to that. And then once we open up, we can have a broader conversation.
have a broader conversation if necessary.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All this motion carries. Five minute.
Okay. Go for it.